Meeting of the Salina City Commission to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Vanier.
Here.
Commissioner Jolka.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Purney.
Here.
I invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now it's time for the Citizens Forum, and time for citizens to come before the commission to comment on topics that are not on the official agenda. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, "The Month of April 2009 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Salina." Jesus Nieto, Salina South High School junior, will read the proclamation.
Hello, I'm Jesus Nieto. I'm from South High, and I'm gonna read this. Whereas on April 2009, I recognized as the 41st anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title 4, I mean Title 8, of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended in which an unciated international policy of fair housing without regarding to race, color, creed, national, original, origin, sex, female, familiar, status, disabilities, and encourage fair housing opportunities for all citizens and whereas barriers that dismiss their rights and limits to options of any citizens will ultimately dismiss the rights and limit the options of all and whereas the Salina Human Relation Commission in partnership with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development committed to highlight the Fair Housing Law, Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 by continuing to address discrimination in our community to support programs that will educate the public about the rights to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership effort with other organizations to help assure every American of their rights to a fair housing. Now, therefore, John K. Vanier, Second Mayor of the City of Salina, Kansas, do hereby resolve the April 2009 as Fair Housing Month. I challenge the people of Salina, Kansas, to learn more about their rights and responsibilities under the Fair Housing Act and the rules they can individually and collectively plan to combat housing discrimination.
Thank you very much. Are there any special events?
Yeah. The Fair Housing Similar.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have a proclamation for you.
Thank you very much, Jesus. Okay. Thank you.
Item 4.2, "The Month of April 2009 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and the Day of April 30th, 2009 as Denim Day in the City of Salina." Claudette Almerez, sexual assault victim advocate with D-VAC, will read the proclamations.
Whatever works. [laughing] "City of Salina Proclamation by the Mayor. Whereas sexual assault is an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in Salina as a victim, survivor, or as a family member, significant other, neighbor, or coworker of a victim survivor. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support victim survivors and their significant others, and increase support for agencies providing services to victim survivors. And whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas has led the way in Salina in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services to victim survivors and their significant others, responding to emergency calls, offering support and comfort to those impacted by sexual assault during medical exams, criminal proceedings, and empowering those impacted by sexual assault to chart their own course for healing. And whereas ending sexual assault in Salina must include active public and private efforts to end sexual violence in collaboration with the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas, including conversation about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with crucial counseling and other support services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. And whereas staff and volunteers of sexual assault programs in Salina work year-round to encourage every person in Salina to end sexual violence and to support survivors by providing prevention education and survivor empowerment information to schools, churches, civic organizations, as well as medical, mental health, law enforcement, education, and criminal justice personnel regarding sexual assault issues. Whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas has set an important example of how forging collaborative relationships between service agencies and organizations serves to improve the quality of service for those most profoundly and directly impacted by sexual violence, thus setting an important example for how the rest of the community might work together to speak out and find solutions to end sexual violence. Whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas requests public support and assistance as it continues its effort to bring real hope for freeing the City of Salina from the tragedy of sexual violence to create a future where all women, men, and children can live free from violence and exploitation. Now, therefore, I, John K. Vanier, Mayor of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2009 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Salina, and I commend this observance to all citizens."
Thank you. Would you like to go ahead with the second proclamation?
Sure. "Denim Day Proclamation. Whereas Salina steps forward to take a stand against rape, and whereas there are sexual assault prevention and education efforts underway throughout Salina and the nation to challenge the societal myths and behaviors that perpetuate rape and to engage communities in a common goal of ending sexual assault. And whereas April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Child Abuse Prevention Month, and whereas International Denim Day has been observed since April 1999 as a symbol of protest in response to an Italian high court decision to overturn a rape conviction because the victim wore jeans. Every year since, community members, elected officials, businesses, and students have organized to make a social statement with their fashion statement and wear jeans as a visible means of protest against myths that surround sexual assault. And whereas Salina is dedicated to the support of Denim Day initiative as there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape. And whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas has worked to coordinate Denim Day 2009, now, therefore, I, John K. Vanier, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2009 as Denim Day, in testimony whereof I have hereunto set my hand in the City of Salina this day in 2009."
Thank you. Are there any other activities planned for the month?
Yes, actually, we have numerous activities planned. Some of the highlighted ones are, on April 18th, at Big Nose Kate's, at 4:00 PM, we'll begin registration for our poker tournament. On April 25th, in cooperation with Humphreys Gym, we'll be sponsoring a 10K and 5K run walk. And then, of course, and that, I believe, the cost, you would send the money either to D-VAC or directly to Humphreys Gym, or you can call us at 785-827-5862 and ask for Claudette, and I can give more information about the cost. I believe the 10K is $20, and the 5K is $15. And then, of course, April 30th, I've sent out letters to different businesses and organizations to ask them for $5, any of their employees can then wear jeans on April 30th in protest and also cooperation in the effort to help end sexual violence within our city.
Very good. Thank you very much. I have signed copies. We have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, "Approve the Minutes of March 23rd, 2009. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 096613, Appointing Anna Marcela to the Human Relations Commission and Claudette Almerez to the Community Corrections Board. Item 6.3, authorize the purchase of 40 personal computers with operating systems from Computer Connection in the amount of $24,160. Item 6.4, Resolution Number 096614, authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement with Sunflower Insurance Group Incorporated to provide insurance broker services. Item 6.5, award of contract for the 2008 subdivision improvements, replat of Bergcamp Subdivision to APAC Kansas Incorporated in amount of $144,445. Item 6.6, Resolution Number 096616, authorize the installation of yield signs on Post Oak Lane at Brett Avenue."
Are there any items that Commissioner would like pulled from the consent agenda?
So, question about 6.6. Was a traffic count actually done at this intersection?
Yes, it was.
And did it meet the warrant for a yield sign?
The warrant for a yield sign? Yes, it does. The question is, does it meet the warrant for a stop sign as well? And we felt like the volumes and the site distances were low enough to where we didn't need a stop sign, basically. We really looked more at the accident history here.
I'm assuming there is such thing as a warrant for a yield sign and then a warrant for a stop sign?
It's very, there's not. There are warrants for a stop sign, and you can either use a stop or a yield, basically, from what we came up with from the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So, it's not a very easy thing to come up with, especially with a lot of intersections in our city that have, they're uncontrolled. So, it's, depending on what that threshold is, we really looked more at the accident history than the volume, because the volumes were not extremely high, but they're high enough that there's obviously been some accidents there in the last two years, seven to be exact. So, that's why we felt like it was warranted at this time to put a yield sign there.
Just curious. I knew there's a warrant for a stop sign, but I wasn't sure about a yield sign.
We have not been able to find a clear-cut definition for yield signs.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Did entertain a motion?
Mayor, I'd move we approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. There is no development business, so we'll move on to administration.
Item 8.1, "Second Reading Ordinance Number 0910,494, Admitting Chapter 35, Section 35-137 of the Salina Code pertaining to construction, reconstruction, and repair of sidewalks."
This ordinance was passed on first reading, March 23rd of '09, and since that time, no comments have been received. Or is there any public comment at this time? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Merlin Stevens, 340 Maple. I have questions on this sidewalk. Mike was trying to help me a little bit on it, but I still like to bring it up, the situation. Several years ago, in my area, on two blocks of Maple, we come out one morning, and there was markings on the sidewalks for three or, well, actually, the 300 block and 400 block, approximately 44 houses involved in that. The markings was on different sections of cement. 122 sections was bad out of the five-foot-by-five-foot pieces of sidewalk. In our area, that cement had been put in when the houses was built back in 1959. We had trees on the street, they had growed, and a lot of it had broken out from that area. A lot of it had not been replaced. I called down to the city to ask what the situation was. They said that somebody complained to them, and they come out and checked them. Fair enough. They marked two or three out of, in front of each house. If you know anything about cement, and if it's settled any, pretty hard to place one or two out of a 50 or 60-foot place. I finally got mine fixed last year or the year before. We need not hear anymore about it. Mine cost around $1,800 in front of my house to get done at that time. Forty-four houses, you know, where are we going? What's the situation? Both ends of that area, I cannot get down with my walker or scooter. So, you know, where the situation on the handicap and situations? You don't know you're going to be there until you get there. For instance, south of Commissioner Larson's business here, going across the sidewalk, going across the street there in front of the old, I call the southwestern bell telephone. The east side, you've got a cut-in. The west side, you don't have a cut. You have to go down to the driveway to get out. Same way in other places around town. You know, I know it costs money, and right now is a bad time for a situation on cutting money, because I think we only had about three or four that passed ours in there. But I would like to see something in houses being built new that you put your sidewalks in and cut, so you don't have to go back in and do it later on. Keep them away from the sidewalk and the street. You know, go on 9th Street. What have we done on 9th Street? You can go all the way down to Chisels, or Chili's. On the east side, you can't. On the west side. Then you go to IHOP, there's no sidewalk. You go down to the bank, there's a sidewalk, but you can't get into the bank if you're on the sidewalk, because there's no cut in there to get in there. A little common sense, I think, somewhere along the line on it. The same way, back there at Chili's on the west side, we got places down there, coming down between Saturn and Auto, you have a sidewalk on both sides there. But you come off of Auto, onto two blocks down there by Brown Mackey, you can't get down off of that to get over to the bus stop over there. So, I think we need to really look into these things. I don't know what, Mayor, this is, and there's another resolution on the other side. I hope that we continue to do something that is nice for everybody, because, you know, we're making a lot of laws, and it takes, all takes money. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And the purpose of these two ordinances is to establish a very subjective way of looking at it, or an objective way of looking at our sidewalks, to alleviate those problems you just described. And this gives staff and the citizens very specific direction and measurements in order to determine if that sidewalk is in compliance and fixed, so we don't have situations that you described. That's the purpose of these two ordinances. Jason, would you like to?
Yeah, Mr. Stevens' comments are pretty timely, because as most folks know, we've been spending a lot of time going through what we call a comprehensive plan. And when we get it up for approval, one of the things that we'll have in it is the concept of complete streets, which highly emphasizes not only vehicular traffic, but pedestrian traffic and sidewalks and crosswalks and things like that, and safe access. So, basically, those who look in the past can look at different eras in Salina's past and see that at times there was an emphasis on sidewalks, at times there wasn't. You can tell by which neighborhood you go into. So, while this aspect that we're talking about today deals with the maintenance and clarifies the tools staff has to help make sure these are maintained, the comprehensive plan will emphasize those new sidewalks and replacements and through the whole complete streets concept. So, it'll take a long time to catch up, you know, from the past years where sidewalks haven't been put in, but the emphasis is to do that and to look at new development a little differently than before.
Thank you. And thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I actually have some questions about this. I apologize, I was gone for the first reading of this ordinance, and then I have some questions that may overlap between this ordinance and actually the next resolution. But, I don't know, Dan, are these going to be directed to you? I was curious if we had established any seasonal limits. I know, for instance, if a citation were to go out and someone in the month of December, for instance, were to receive this, that could be pretty hard on a lot of families. And then, also, I'm not sure if, you know, if it's 10 degrees out, if that's necessarily an appropriate seasonal consideration in issuing these. Is there anything, I guess, it's a little hard to apply, but is there anything that we've thought about to address those issues?
Yeah, I kind of described it in the resolution, blue sheet, that we don't kind of take, we take call-ins, we don't really have a proactive approach yet for addressing this. We take call-ins, and we get out there when we can to meet with the person and talk about the situation, and then we can send the letter out sometime thereafter. So, I guess if we did get a request in December, if we didn't send it out till January, we really can't put concrete down in the winter anyway, so it would be, we just have to exercise some judgment. I thought, Jared helped us a lot with this, the 30 to 60 days statutory, so it's, you know, if it's January 1st, and you have to have it done by March 1st, I guess, that does present a little bit of pickle.
Well, I have no doubt that city staff would be lenient with working with someone if they came to them, but...
The notice provisions, whether it's repair, if it's repair, then Dan's office or city manager, his designee, would have as much discretion, as long as there's a minimum of five days' notice, they could have discretion, depending on the season. If it's a complete reconstruction, pulling out the sidewalk and laying it new, then Dan's reference to that 30-60 notice timeframe would give he and his staff discretion as far as how much time would be necessary, depending on the season and the condition of the sidewalk itself. So, both of those notice requirements, I think, would probably address that discretionary issue.
And then, with, this is a really sticky issue, because I understand the city certainly can't go around, I mean, from a budget standpoint, on a personal standpoint as well as the city, it's just really not feasible. But are we really prepared? I am looking at a lot on Santa Fe, or a big lot that has potentially 100 feet worth of concrete to replace, and even though most of these places are sectional, it's not uncommon to think that there could be 50 to 100 feet of concrete on certain lots that would actually need to be replaced. Are we really prepared to force median-income, low-income people to spend potentially $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 to get their sidewalks up to snuff?
In the notice requirements, I don't know really how feasible this is, but there is a notice that says financial assistance may be available to qualified owners. Call City of Salina Neighborhood Services at 309. I don't know what threshold that is, but I was glad to see that, because you're exactly right, there's no way we can expect low-income to repair that. And if there's some way to, some funding sources out there, I don't know. Gary, do you have any addition to that?
I can jump in a little bit, Dan. We've had a lot of talks about that issue as well, and quite honestly, every community I've been to has had the same issue, and they've really not done anything about it, and their sidewalks deteriorate over time until someone complains, because the cracks are too big and somebody gets hurt. What a lot of cities do is put together cost sharing, and maybe there's some, we can use, for example, Housing Rehab Grant, or there are other guidelines we could use maybe for how we do the cost sharing with regards to income qualification, but that's something that we really think we need to do. But what we'll probably have to do is simply budget money in order to do that, so that if we, and most of the sidewalk complaints we deal with are complaint-driven, actually, the repair issues are complaint-driven, so we're kind of obligated at that point to respond. But we've talked a lot about, and Mike Frazier's working on some program guidelines that we can maybe bring to you, but we think we need to be able to help in that circumstance, so we can address it.
Okay. Now, if, for instance, you were on a corner lot and you had handicap ramp accessible crosswalk on your lot, I'm assuming those are actually the city's responsibility?
That's been our past practice for development as well as repair on any streets, is that we deal with the handicap accessible ramp.
And going forward, it will be.
That's a good question, and that's been our city practice. I don't know if the statute gives us authority to, if somebody owns a handicap ramp, if we were to cite them, and would they have to repair that?
Well, the statute gives the city discretion as far as assessing, I should say discretion. It's not mandatory that the city assess the cost for the sidewalk, obviously, that may be necessary, just depending on the budget, but I think that would be a discretionary call for the city.
Yeah, we hadn't really talked about that much, but as Dan mentioned, our practice has been that we've dealt with the ramps in order to meet ADA guidelines, so we certainly haven't talked about changing that at all.
Okay. I think that, about does it, I'll be clear, and it was probably in here, and I overlooked it. I know in Section 835 of the city code, you do not need a permit to do work on a sidewalk or driveway. I don't remember on this if you do need a permit.
Yeah, you do.
How do we reconcile that with prior wording in the city code, then? Or does this over...
Basically, our city code just says any concrete work in the right-of-way. So, that's, our concrete permit covers driveway, sidewalk, retaining walls, anything concrete related in the right-of-way.
But did I misread? In Section 835, it specifically says, or maybe that's just in the IBC, maybe there's a code that, or maybe there's an amendment we've already had, but in 835, well, actually, in Section 835, it is an amendment to Section R105.2 in the IBC that states permits will not be required for sidewalks and driveways not more than 30 inches above adjacent grade.
That's actually a development.
Yeah, that amendment pertains to a building permit, but the engineering department requires a permit to be able to work in the right-of-way.
Okay.
And so, they wouldn't go through a design, plan, permit, supplemental process for the Building Services Department, but they would need engineering review and approval to conduct the work.
Yeah, but just to make sure everyone's clear, if you're talking about just the private property area only, that concrete flatwork, driveways, sidewalks, whatever it might be, would not require a separate permit.
And then, lastly, I saw one of the remediation techniques on if, for instance, you had a one-inch gap in between sections of your sidewalk, that that could be remediated by simply pouring in that one-inch gap. Do we have standards on how a one-inch pour is done and actually kept from breaking up within a month?
Yeah, that's a good question, and we were open to as tough a standards, or as, we just really want to eliminate the trip hazard. So, filling it in with something gets you by for a while, but it's, I mean, we really feel like that those things will work themselves out. If somebody has to fill it in every year, then they'll think, okay, maybe I need to replace it, but some grout or some, something to fill the gap is a fair measure. Some grout or some, something to fill the gap is, is a fair measure to keep it from, somebody from tripping, basically, for a while.
All right. Well, I appreciate the flexibility.
I have one more question. Uh, what about brick sidewalks? We still have miles of brick sidewalks. The blue sheet discussion seems to indicate that, uh, it only talks about concrete and thus far you've only talked about concrete. But, uh, is it permissible under this, if you cite my brick sidewalk, that I can, uh, invest the labor of taking that up, leveling out the soil underneath and lay it back down so it's smooth within the, uh, requirements?
We, we tried to give that flexibility as well for a one-inch or greater elevation difference. You can lift or replace. So the lifting is, I mean, for bricks, that's probably, that's the best way to do it as far as, but for a piece of five, four, five-four sidewalk, you can lift those. It's just not easy to do. So if you want it, I mean, that's, that is a fair repair. And so we tried to give everybody as much leeway as possible to eliminate the trip hazard. So that is, that would be a fine repair for that.
I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, most of our brick sidewalk, if not all of it, is in the downtown.
Yes, and see, downtown is separate. We actually have, our guys maintain the brick sidewalks downtown. I, are you talking in front of...
Well, I've, I know of, uh, one that's in really bad shape on Gypsum, for example, and, and, uh, one on North Street, north of downtown, of the technical definition of downtown and...
Right.
So, yeah, if someone wanted to replace that with concrete, is that what you're asking?
I'm saying, could it be replaced with brick rather than concrete? Because it almost sounds like we're making it mandatory that you go with concrete. Or can you simply take up the brick, regrade it, put the brick back down?
Yeah, that would be the, a good repair. If we are stepping beyond that, then, yeah, I don't see why we would, I guess, unless we're some reason mandating concrete. But we wouldn't want to do that in that case.
And Dan, lastly, I forgot one other question.
Okay.
Is the city, um, I guess, what's the city's policy going to be with regard to their own sidewalks? I mean, if somebody wants to get just, if they want to be a real pain about this, this would be a, shouldn't say this on TV, but anyway, it'd be a prime opportunity to really send in some complaints. What, what's our policy? Are we gonna, are we gonna typically try to respond within 30 to 60 days of a...
Well, I think so. I, it's pretty rare that we actually get to complain about our own. There is, there's one source that's fairly regular, but, but, uh, yeah, I mean, anytime we would get a complaint about our infrastructure, it goes in, uh, if it comes in through our office, we, and really in just about all the offices, we put it on the electronic, uh, service request system. My, Dan's folks go out and take a look at it and see, so we'd respond to those. So, yeah, we want to do that. Now, if somebody said, "Well, I expect you to repair every foot or every mile of your, what'd be your sidewalk." You know, if you ask me to do one parcel of my property, we wouldn't be in a position to do that. And it becomes a much bigger policy question. But, uh, um, if they give us specific areas, I, the expectation is we look at them, determine if they're out of line and fix them if they are.
Yep. The statute's clear about the adjacent property owner has to maintain that sidewalk. So in the case of any city property, we've already run into that on a, on the Lakewood Bridge. USD 305 is over there, but we really own the property on both sides of that bridge. So technically, that's, we're the adjacent property owners there, so we're going to fix that one. So there's, there's going to be time for, the city's the adjacent property owner and we got to fix it. And our guys are used to that.
And if I can, um, ask, which doesn't have a lot to do with this, but I'm thinking about it right now. Um, on the, um, ramps, I understand that that's an ongoing thing that we are every, we are still ongoing to try to get, uh, the city 100% compliant on that. Uh, is it usually in the summertime? Is that, uh, is there usually a season that, uh, they're out doing, uh, obviously not in the wintertime?
Yeah, during the construction season.
Yep, we have a con, $100,000 a year we spend on, on ADA sidewalk ramps.
So that is, that is still continuing, ongoing, okay?
Budget that every year in the sub-CIP, and we're just slowly working our way around the city.
Okay, wanted to make sure we were still on top of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
I don't think we have a motion.
Oh, I'm so funny.
We've had lots of discussion and no motion. Okay, I'll move that we adopt, uh, res... Wait a minute, which were you doing, the resolution or the, uh, an ordinance here?
This is the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, so I'd go ahead and move that we, uh, adopt resolution number zero. No, that's the wrong one. I've, I've changed, I've shuffled my pages too fast. Take it.
May I move and adopt ordinance number 09-10494 on second reading?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 0910494 on second reading. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Jelka?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Perny?
Aye.
Mayor Vaneer?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, Resolution Number 096612, adopting sidewalk condemnation, reconstruction and repair standards, referenced in section 35-137 of the Salina Code.
Mr. Stack?
Is this the resolution? Okay. City staff went through, um, quite a few different city policies. A lot of them exist, a lot of them have the same challenges we do. Cities deal with this issue on a, on different, in different ways. Some of them have a real proactive approach where they assess sidewalks and get out there and survey them every so often and then actually budget city funds to fix them. Lots of cities and state, and state statutes put that back on the adjacent property owners. So we went through, you know, what is a fair repair policy? Um, how, how, how much of a tripper is too much or too little? How big of a gap is too big or small? And so we did the best we could coming up with what we thought were, was a, was a fair look and started, um, coming up with some objective criteria as, as John talked about, that we can actually go out there and, um, measure and give somebody an idea of what, what needs to be repaired and what doesn't. So that's, that's the history on this. It's, um, the city policy has been, over the years, that we, we, we just do this on a re, on a reactive basis. When a citizen complaint comes in, we go out and look at it and determine whether it needs to be fixed or not. I would stand for any questions?
Questions to staff? Questions? Any public comment? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dan. We're talking about reconstruction. Okay? My house, the apron to the driveway is poured in the sidewalk. So when they put my sidewalk in, they sloped it to the driveway so it would not be back up. Now, by chance, that thing goes bad and you come out and mark it, that sidewalk in my apron is going to have to be tore out. I would like to have some policy to see what you should do and what that is before it happens. And I think this is where we've been on a lot of this things. We've been letting it happen. We put in new streets and didn't put in, on Santa Fe. How do you get up except at a crosswalk? You've got a curb. You've got the roll curbs out in Yale and Nodle. You can't get up them. They are not soaped up. If you've got a scooter, I got a scooter at home, it will go up with them. But you have to be careful how you do it. You know, the roll curbs are supposed to help and keep the water. But we're getting too much on even keel with the water flow, and then you have to keep that over on the side. So I think we need to look into that, too, and I hope Dan does. Because there is a lot of places that is happening. And back to your bricks, you've got bricks on South Santa Fe in front of, I think there used to be some in front of Commissioner Jelka's house on the west side, in the 800 or 900 block there, because I checked that and there was some bad sidewalks on, uh, around him several years ago and Commissioner Monty Shadwick when he was at that time. You know, and I, you know, we have statutes and things like this, just like they tell you, the statutes on, on doors opening, you have to have them five to eight pounds. You know, if the winds are blowing, what's five to eight pounds? How do you test them? The same way. I think you need to go to sliding glass doors rather than swinging doors. I'm sure it's more money. But you sure got a lot of deals because Dillons and Walmart and all them have them. You go into a bank, they tell me you can't have them. They can't make a, a system fast enough to open a door
Sir.
with bulletproof in it.
Or stick to sidewalks.
This is what I was told. But I think we need to worry about some, we worry about all kinds of statutes. But a little common sense with them statutes goes a long ways.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt resolution number 09-6612?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 096612, adopting sidewalk condemnation, reconstruction and repair standards, referenced in section 35-137 of the Salina Code. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.3, first reading ordinance number 09, 10,495, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances.
Mr. Franz?
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. Uh, throughout the year, we do nuisance abatements on a variety of properties. Might be mowing, might be debris removal, uh, other types of cleanup. And typically, we, uh, will then, uh, bill the property owner, uh, give them 30 days to pay. And, uh, after that time expires, then the, uh, amount that is due is, is subject to, uh, to be certified against the, uh, property taxes on the property. In past years, we have typically done that certification in August each year with the, uh, change in the budget cycle. Uh, this year, we are accelerating that and, and switching to a quarterly assessment, uh, because of the, um, uh, perception that, that, uh, in fact, we're losing recovery on some of these due to foreclosure actions on properties that have not yet been assessed. So we, this, this assessment, uh, catches us up from, uh, June 2008 through February of 2009. And there's a number of properties here, I think 130, uh, properties. Amount to be assessed is $23,340. And then the intention is to, to continue this, uh, on a quarterly basis, uh, to stay a little more current with the, uh, with the situation. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions to staff? Thank you. Any public comment? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd move that ordinance number 09, 10,495, levying special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances be approved on first reading?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance number 0910495, which levies special assessments against certain lots and pieces of property to pay the cost of abatement of nuisances. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.4, Resolution Number 096615, authorizing agreement with the Salina Arts and Humanities Foundation regarding responsibility relating to the arts and humanities programming.
Connie?
Good evening. As you see on your blue sheet, uh, this has been a process of coming together to sort of, uh, disentangle some overlap between the two organizations of the foundation of the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission and the commission itself. If you notice on page two, um, there are some ambiguities that have given rise to the financing and operation of the Salina budget, providing for staffing costs as well as the annual lump contribution to the foundation, which we have tried to address by this agreement. And also, in addition to that, there have been, um, some requests regarding public records, open meetings requirements, risk management and purchasing authority, that, uh, those also have become a little blurred, the lines between the two agencies. So, uh, while we have already made the, the commission has already, uh, made a decision to make bylaws changes, there are only really two bylaws that affect, uh, what we're doing here today. One is that we, the bylaws now, uh, specify that the foundation directors cannot be current, either current employees of the city or current commissioners of the Arts and Humanities Commission. And then the second one is that the directors are elected by the sitting board of directors, uh, which is the case of most foundations. There will not be anything involved in you making a decision on that. Those decisions have already been approved, as I say, by the commission. Under the agreement, uh, the city of Salina, through the Arts and Humanities Department and with the advice of the commission, will be responsible for program operations. These will include developing, budgeting, administrating and accounting for all the programmatic aspects of the Arts and Humanities Department. The city finance department will establish two financial accounting funds. They will be the Smoky Hill River Festival Fund and the General Arts and Humanities Program Fund. The responsibility of the Humanities Foundation, this Arts and Humanities Foundation, uh, if you look on the top of page four of your blue sheet, uh, you'll see that they have only, they were remaining with four primary responsibilities for the foundation. Private, private fundraising, investing foundation funds held on account, entering into private contracts with the artists of the Smoky Hill River Festival, the payment for which shall be made by the foundation, and allocating and granting private funds to the city for programs which may be approved from time to time. An example of that would be our Horizons Grants Program. Each party will be responsible for their own risk expense exposures. And the, finally, the fiduciary assets such as our investments, checking accounts currently owned by the Salina Arts and Humanities Foundation shall, shall remain the property of the foundation. And the art collection currently owned and catalogued by the foundation will also remain the property of the foundation. All the other tangible, uh, property will be transferred to the city to be used in implementing the arts and humanities programming. There is a fiscal note attached, also beginning on page four, uh, with a proposed approximate annualized budget and, um, some notations on page six in regard to the conformance with the Big Ideas Strategic Plan, Cultural Plan for 2008, 2013. That's a brief overview, and I just want to give you guys a chance to try to attempt to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Questions to staff? How is the first foundation board going to be picked?
The first foundation board will be appointed by the current commission. From then on, they will be self-perpetuating.
Current arts commissioner, city commission?
Sir, arts commission, thank you. Try to be very clear about that.
And there are specific terms?
Yes, there will be three-year, three-year terms with a limit of two, back-to-back max.
Are they going to be staggered?
Yes, we are going to stagger the terms.
Other questions to staff?
Yeah, I have two or three. Um, first one on the foundation is it anticipated that the foundation will have any actual paid employees?
Not at this time, but it is allowable for them in the future, should they decide to grow.
And on the responsibilities of the foundation, um, talks about private contracts for the artists for the River Festival. Before that, on two A, talks about private fundraising. Is that intended to be just for the River Festival or is it other kinds of...
We also have private fundraising for the Horizons Grant, the portion that's privately matched with some of the city funds to re-grant to programs and developing artists.
It could be other programs.
That's correct.
Is there any role of the foundation in the public art program of the city?
There isn't at this point. It's separate as part of the community art and design, uh, guidelines.
The only reason I brought that up was because when the city commission... The only reason I brought that up was because when the City Commission declined to pay for Towers on the Ohio Project, there was some indication that a private group could raise the funds for that, and I didn't know if this was that kind of a fund.
I don't think there's any, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's anything in the bylaws that would prohibit the Foundation from raising additional funds, should it be acceptable to the Slinna Arts Humanities Commission and to the City Commission for us to do so.
For some kind of a public arts program. Third thing, item three, the existing arts collection, it's my understanding that's been paid for by purchases from the River Festival funds, from River Festival artists.
That's correct.
So is that going to continue, but the title goes to the Foundation? Is that the plan?
The existing property will remain, the property to date will remain in the hands of the Foundation going forward, because that fund will come from City, from the City. It will become City property.
So the City will have to have, is it anticipated then, I guess, for the City to continue buying River Festival art and building another separate public art collection of these relatively small art objects that are strung all over the city's various buildings? Displayed, I guess, is better than strung all over.
Strung all over the city.
Displayed in various public buildings.
And should there be a policy change by the City Commission, we would certainly respond to that, but the intent would be to continue as we have in the past. There's no intent to change.
So it'd be a separate collection, though? Okay. I think that's, those are my marginal notes, literally in margins here.
Other questions of staff? Guess not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Not, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-6615, executing an agreement between the Mayor and the City of Slinna and the Slinna Arts and Humanities Foundation regarding responsibilities relating to arts and humanities programming.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 09-6615. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.5, Charter Ordinance Number 35, amending Section 2 of Charter Ordinance Number 22 concerning KSA 12-1697, the Promotion of Tourism in Conventions, authorizing the levying of transient guest tax by cities and repealing existing Section 2.
Mr. Gage.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Kansas statutes allow cities and counties to levy a transient guest tax, otherwise known to some as a hotel tax or room tax. The reason that is, is because it's collected as a percentage of hotel motel room rates. The purpose is for providing revenues to promote tourism and conventions. The statute limits the total tax to 2%, but when you read the statute, there's some variations to that, which means it's non-uniform, and when a statute's non-uniform, cities can pass what's called a charter amendment, which can give us ability to make a decision outside of that. And obviously, in this case, it is non-uniform, and that's how the changes in the transient guest tax have occurred over the past few years. We started with a 2% in 1977, and then in 1986, through a charter amendment giving us the authority to raise it, went to a 3%, and then there's a typo here, in 1991, used a charter amendment as well, or charter ordinance as well, to allow for a 5%. And so that's what we have been on since 1991. The Charter Ordinance is a pretty common tool. This would be our 35th, and you'll find that most cities do use that from time to time. During the 2008 budget process, staff proposed to the City Commission the possibility of increasing the transient guest tax to help fund bicentennial center upgrades. After that conversation began, there are folks in the community that looked much broader at the use of that funding mechanism, and as a result of that, the Chamber, Slinna Area Chamber of Commerce, Visit Slinna Division, hosted numerous discussions related to the use of that tax. When all that was through, there was a recommendation made to look at the use of that for, obviously, bicentennial center upgrades, but also for direct marketing of the facility in that park area, and then the creation of a marketing grant program for local cultural organizations. The reason for the latter item is simply because Slinna is very, very well-known with regards to our cultural offerings, and we provide attractions that bring folks from quite a distance, and so there was a thought that we could utilize this to enhance our ability to bring folks into the community for those purposes. On March 23rd, the Chamber provided their proposal to the City Commission in a study session, which included a request to increase the transient guest tax from the current 5% to 6.75%. And that was to be allocated with 1% of that increase to be for the bicentennial center upgrades. That's about, estimated to be about $200,000 worth per year. One quarter of that percent to go towards the marketing of the facility in the area, which equals about $50,000 per year, and then a half a percent for the cultural marketing grants, which equals about $100,000 per year. The total, again, is a 1.75% change, and the estimated value of that is about $350,000 per year. As you're well aware of, the Cities Capital Improvement Program, over the next two years, has two phases for improvements for the bicentennial center. The Kenwood-Oakdale Park marketing aspect would be administered by the Visit Slinna Division of the Chamber, with really the intent to be extremely aggressive in our marketing of the facility in the area, to bring people into our community. And it actually complements the improvements we want to make at that facility as well. The cultural marketing grant allocation would be divided into two basic programs. The first would use 80% or a significant majority of that aspect of the funding for those cultural entities that are willing to invest a minimum of 5,000 in regional marketing, not local, but regional, which is very important, and it also requires a dollar-for-dollar match. So they have to be pretty serious about it if they're going to participate. The real key is that this would require the entities to establish a joint regional marketing plan, and also demonstrate partnerships that would create multi-day events and create the need for overnight stays. And that's the key to why we're doing this, is to create the overnight stay opportunities, so it comes back in through the tax and continues to generate revenues. The second program would use the remaining 20% of the cultural allocation for campaign event-specific marketing for special events that occur throughout the year. Basically, things come up, and when they do, it provides an opportunity to look at those and see how we could enhance the marketing and bring more people into town. If you participate in the, in one program, you're not able to participate in the other cultural program. This also is intended to encourage marketing in conjunction with local hotels and bring more business there as well. What we've put out in front of you is an adoption timeline, and again, today's action is specifically the Charter, first reading of the Charter Ordinance Number 35. We've scheduled for the 13th the second reading, on the presumption that the first reading is approved, and also on the 13th, we would have the transient guest tax resolution. The Charter Ordinance that we're dealing with today only, is a process that only grants you the authority to increase the tax. It doesn't actually increase the tax. You would establish the actual tax by the resolution itself. That would be at the next week's meeting. We have a schedule for first and final publications. There is a protest period, because it is a Charter Ordinance, and after all that is over with, and we look at the statutory guidelines for the implementation and effective date of the tax, the new transient guest tax of 6.75% if approved, would go to, go into effect on October 1st. We'll have, even if you do approve the Charter Ordinance and the resolution next week, there's still a couple of actions that we'll bring in front of you. One would be an amendment to the Economic Development Agreement with the Chamber of Commerce that would spell out basically this, the funding for these programs, and provide them with the authority to administer those, and also, they would bring back the cultural grant program guidelines for your approval, so that you are confident that those do exactly what you would like them to do. We looked at the strategic plan, and we looked at this item, and there are a couple of things we think that it does help address. One deals with creating a uniformly managed and master planned Kenwood Park and Oakdale Park destination, and we believe that by enhancing the value of the bicentennial center and bringing more activities and events to the marketing and the renovations, that certainly will make better use of that area. The second is to, City would work to make Slinna a city that has connectivity physically and socially. This really deals with the social aspect. We think the project fulfills that action item of promoting public and private partnerships for community projects and service endeavors throughout Slinna's cultural community, so we really hit that one right on. Again, the fiscal note, this is, a lot of times we bring you things, and the fiscal note, it's a negative, it's a cost to us. In this case, from the revenue perspective, it's a positive fiscal impact, with the current year estimate to be about $350,000. Gave you three possible alternatives. One would be to adopt the Charter Ordinance as proposed. Second, obviously, to deny the Charter Ordinance as proposed. The third would be to approve an amended version of the Charter Ordinance, if you would like to do that. We, staff recommends alternative one. Certainly, we're open to any other thoughts that you might have. Be happy to answer questions that you might have. For the legal questions, I think we have you covered. If you're interested with regards to any of the cultural applications, we have, or any of the other aspects, we have representatives from Visit Slinna here, as well as the, those that would be representing the Big Ideas Funding Committee that may be able to answer other questions regarding the cultural grants as well, so.
Questions of staff?
So this is, this vote, we're Charter Ordinance, passing Charter Ordinance to give us the authority to raise the guest tax, and next week, we deal with the details.
That's correct. You'll have the second reading of the Charter Ordinance and the resolution, and the resolution would actually be the action that would increase the tax.
Couple other questions. You mentioned $200,000 a year. Do we know how many years that means, or?
Well, what we've talked about is putting a sunset on the, on the tax specifically with regards to the bicentennial center upgrades, looking at 10 years. That will end up being built into your resolution, so that will be spelled out for you next week. But I don't think that will fully fund the improvements that we have, but it will go a long way in assisting us in making those improvements.
So the additional 1% here would go entirely to the City?
Yes, entirely to the improvements at the bicentennial center.
And then the other 5% currently would continue the same breakdown?
Yeah, the other 0.25% would be for marketing, would be administered by Visit Slinna, but would be directly in-
I'm at the 5% that's currently-
Oh, yes. Yeah, that would be for the cultural marketing grants, for the cultural institutions in the community.
No, I'm talking about the, the 5%, the current 5%.
I'm sorry, I was thinking the half percent.
The 60% goes to Visit Slinna, and 4% comes to the City.
Yeah, the current, I see what you're saying. The current amount that was levied today for the tax, the 5%, would continue to be allocated the same ways it is today. There'd be no change in that.
Our direct subsidy to the Bi-Center is about, what, $275,000?
I'd like to think so. It varies. In years past, it's been around there, and the last couple of years, though, it's gone up from there. We're trying to bring it back into that range if we can.
Then on top of the transient guest tax money?
It is on top of the transient guest tax, and also the revenues generated by the facility.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? Any public comment? Not, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
I want to make a few comments before we move forward. This idea first came up when the need became apparent to upgrade the bicentennial center, and I know the first time it was mentioned at a study session about six months ago. All the Commissioners expressed support. I have had some reservations on two fronts. One, the, I've never agreed with the percentage breakdown that was put in place 1990 or whenever the last play, time this was raised, because I think we should be equal partners with the Chamber, not junior partners. I'm not real comfortable with the idea of using this pot to fund arts organizations. I was at the Arts and Humanities Meeting a couple of weeks ago, when both the Steeple and the Community Theaters presented their case, and were granted Horizons Grants. Seems to me that's a better way to fund arts organizations. However, I might be amenable to compromise over that. The reason I want to make these comments is kind of anticipating next week on the details, when we get to that. I thought the Journal editorial that was in the paper this past week was a little misleading in the fact that, to my knowledge, all the Commissioners up here have supported an increase in the guest tax. There's just been some discussion on the details, which the Journal practically ignored. Just as a suggestion, it's something that I think should be considered, and, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, the transient guest tax brings in a little bit shy of a million dollars somewhere in the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's correct.
Mm-hmm. I think that we should raise the guest tax 6.75% and just split it 50/50 with the Chamber. That way, they get more money. We need a lot more money for these Bi-Center upgrades. I won't go through the math at the moment, but I'm sure we'll have a chance to do that in the next week, but I'm hoping some other proposals will be considered in the next week. In the meantime, I would like to move that we approve Charter Ordinance Number 35, amending Section 2 of Charter Ordinance Number 22 concerning KSA 12-1697, the Promotion of Tourism and Conventions, authorizing the levying of transient guest tax by cities, and repealing existing Section 2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Charter Ordinance, Charter Ordinance Number 35, as proposed on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor of Venier, I move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the City's interest in the matters, and reconvene in this room at 5:22 PM.
It's been moved and seconded to recess into executive session and reconvene at 5:22. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Do you anticipate any action?
We do not.
Thank you. We're in executive session.